Are you in slideshow? I don't know if that sometimes that makes a difference.
Yeah, I am, but.
Oh, there we go. Hold on. Now, now we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you seeing the map?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I should have practiced it, I guess, to get the technology right. But next time I'll come in person.
No worries.
So anyway, so this kind of just shows, you know, the surrounding area. It doesn't really show where your district is kind of downstream to the southwest of there. But I have looked at the map of your Stormwater District, which is interesting, right? Because it's got a tiny piece that's in Santa Clara County and then a larger piece that's in San Benito County. So it's kind of interesting the way your district is in both counties like that. But it's certainly downstream from these waterways, which I understand why it would be interesting to you what would happen upstream. One of the things I think you got a little, for those of you that were there for the March meeting when the Valley Water Representative was there, I think it's important to note that this really is proposed to be water supply for Valley Water, and it would be operated for water supply needs. It's not proposed to be operated for flood control. So some of the impacts that we've been focusing on and trying to get, you know, more attention around as Valley Water kind of struggles through the environmental review process for this large infrastructure project is, you know, the kind of the very large new footprint of the dam, unlike some other dams that are true expansions where you're just raising an existing dam. Are you able to see the negative consequences slide just?
Yes, we can. It's difficult to read, but we do see the slide.
Okay, great. And then there's also a lot of significant cultural resources in this area. There's artifacts that are over 3,000 years old up in this area. As you guys probably know, the, you know, what is now Highway 152 was a very old pathway for, for people who lived in the area long ago, and it still is, because it's one of the only ways to get over the Diablo Range. So there's quite a bit of interesting resources there that have been documented, and that there's a Amamutson tribal band has been involved in trying to protect those resources from disturbance. It's also a really expensive project, probably up toward $4 billion with interest. And there is a little bit of public funding has come in through the Prop 1 program, but it would be, you know, going on ratepayers in Valley Waters district to pay for. We've been talking about alternatives. Obviously, it's important to have secure water supplies for Santa Clara and other areas of the state. We're promoting increased groundwater recharge and storage. And then there's some more feasible water storage projects like San Luis and Los Verceros expansions that we think could meet Santa Clara's needs. I think probably the main thing I heard you all talking about with Ryan McCarter was, you know, what's the flood control implications of this project? And there's kind of fine really good watershed maps. But if you look up at where the Henry Coast State Park is and where it says Diablo, that's where the dam would be. It really only dams the North Fork, Pacheco Creek, and a little part of what's called the East Fork, I believe. So it's about, it's about 0.05% of the entire watershed, because the Palmero watershed is about 1,300 square miles. So that's probably why when the Army Corps of Engineers studied it in '94 and also in 2001, upper watershed storage projects were not recommended for flood control. So obviously, there was the huge levee break in 2023 that was concerning. And I imagine that you all had flooding in your area at that time as well. But the levee break was really due to the lack of maintenance. And if properly maintained, that level of flow could have been held back and kept those people safe in the homes. And I think what's really important to understand is that because so such a small percentage of the overall watershed could be contained by this proposed dam, it really can't do that much to prevent flooding. I know some other figures have been provided by Valley Water about how it might reduce flows in the lower part of Pacheco Creek. But that assumes that Valley Water would have room capacity in this new reservoir, and that it would be operating it for flood control, which the way that it's been presented to Valley Water and internally is that, you know, it's for water supply. So that means, you know, keeping the reservoir as full as possible, not so much, you know, having it be ready for what might be very infrequent higher flows out of that part of the mountain. So we are working with advocacy communication. We're interested, like I said, in collaborating with groups from San Benito County and in the local area, certainly on protecting ranchlands and habitat areas. So that was the slides that I had. And I didn't want to, I don't know why I'm doubled up.
Oh.
On my view. That was confusing. But anyway, yeah, so I'm happy to answer any questions or if there's any other information I could provide.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions that the trustees have?
Osha, I'm Paula. I want to ask you, the page that has the map, what is the title of that page? Because it just says, we can't read what the title of the page is.
Oh, the PowerPoint slide that has our map?
The one that has the map.
Oh, of the dam, the proposed dam or the watershed map?
See, the, the page that we have has a title on it, but I can't make out what it says because the letters are superimposed over each other. But I can make out that it says something Pacheco Project.
Yeah, it's. Oh, it says overview. I'm sorry. Yeah, I think we forgot to check when we put it in a PDF, thinking that would be helpful because it wouldn't be as big of a file. But yeah, it just says.
Okay. So on that map page, so there's a proposed new dam. Where's the existing one? There it is.
It's way down there. And you probably know, there's, the Division of Dam Safety has said that Chaco Pass Water District can't hold back any water behind.
Let me try one thing, sorry. You think we'd be better at these same things? See some slideshows. Make this bigger. Anyone there wants to? Look at you. Looks kind of the same.
It is a little bigger.
Okay, well, we'll go with this. I apologize. So anyway, here's a map, which you also have in your printout, which might be somewhat useful for you. Is this kind of shows in the blue where the existing Pacheco Lake is that you all are probably familiar with, and then what the footprint of the new reservoir would be if built. And it would inundate about 1,500 acres. And because of the geotechnical challenges up in that area, Valley Water's had to keep kind of moving the location of the proposed dam, which you see is the kind of the dark brown blob. Or it's marked right here if I can show with my cursor. But the new reservoir would be about 25 times the size of the existing reservoir.
I'm going to interrupt you for just a second. So all we can see is the first page. Can you advance through the slides or?
I did, but.
Are you in slideshow? I don't know if that, sometimes that makes a difference.
Yeah, I am, but.
Oh, there we go. Hold on, now we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Are you seeing the map?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I should have practiced it, I guess, to get the technology right. But next time I'll come in person.
No worries.
So anyway, so this kind of just shows, you know, the surrounding area. It doesn't really show where your district is kind of downstream to the southwest of there. But I have looked at the map of your stormwater district, which is interesting, right? Because it's got a tiny piece that's in Santa Clara County and then a larger piece that's in San Benito County. So it's kind of interesting the way your district is in both counties like that. But it's certainly downstream from these waterways, which I understand why it would be interesting to you, what would happen upstream. One of the things I think you got a little, for those of you that were there for the March meeting when the Valley Water representative was there, I think it's important to note that this really is proposed to be water supply for Valley Water. And it would be operated for water supply needs. It's not proposed to be operated for flood control. So some of the impacts that we've been focusing on and trying to get, you know, more attention around as Valley Water kind of struggles through the environmental review process for this large infrastructure project is, you know, the kind of the very large new footprint of the dam, unlike some other dams that are true expansions where you're just raising an existing dam. Are you able to see the negative consequences slide just?
Yes, we can. It's difficult to read, but we do see the slide.
Okay, great. And then there's also a lot of significant cultural resources in this area. There's artifacts that are over 3,000 years old up in this area. As you guys probably know, the, you know, what is now Highway 152 was a very old pathway for people who lived in the area long ago. And it still is, because it's one of the only ways to get over the Diablo Range. So there's quite a bit of interesting resources there that have been documented and that there's a Amahutson tribal band has been involved in trying to protect those resources from disturbance. It's also a really expensive project, probably up toward $4 billion with interest. And there is a little bit of public funding has come in through the Prop 1 program, but it would be, you know, going on rate payers in Valley Water's district to pay for. We've been talking about alternatives. Obviously, it's important to have secure water supplies for Santa Clara and other areas of the state. We're promoting increased groundwater recharge and storage. And then there's some more feasible water storage projects like San Luis and Los Fajeros expansions that we think could meet Santa Clara's needs. I think probably the main thing I heard you all talking about with Ryan McCarter was, you know, what's the flood control implications of this project? And there's kind of fine, really good watershed maps. But if you look up at where the Henry Coast State Park is and where it says Diablo, that's where the dam would be. It really only dams the North Fork, Pacheco Creek, and a little part of what's called the East Fork, I believe. So it's about, it's about 0.05% of the entire watershed. Because the Palmero watershed is about 1,300 square miles. So that's probably why when the Army Corps of Engineers studied it in '94 and also in 2001, upper watershed storage projects were not recommended for flood control. So obviously, there was the huge levee break in 2023 that was concerning. And I imagine that you all had flooding in your area at that time as well. But the levee break was really due to the lack of maintenance. And if properly maintained, that level of flow could have been held back and kept those people safe in the homes. And I think what's really important to understand is that because so such a small percentage of the overall watershed could be contained by this proposed dam, it really can't do that much to prevent flooding. I know some other figures have been provided by Valley Water about how it might reduce flows in the lower part of Pacheco Creek. But that assumes that Valley Water would have room capacity in this new reservoir and that it would be operating it for flood control, which the way that it's been presented to Valley Water and internally is that, you know, it's for water supply. So that means, you know, keeping the reservoir as full as possible, not so much, you know, having it be ready for what might be very infrequent higher flows out of that part of the mountain. So we are working with advocacy communication. We're interested, like I said, in collaborating with groups from San Benito County and in the local area, certainly on protecting ranch lands and habitat areas. So that was the slides that I had. And I didn't want to, I don't know why I'm doubled up. On my view, that was confusing. But anyway, yeah, so I'm happy to answer any questions or if there's any other information I could provide.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions that the trustees have?
Osha, I'm Paula. I want to ask you, the page that has the map, what is the title of that page? Because it just says, we can't read what the title of the page is.
Oh, the PowerPoint slide that has our map?
The one that has the map.
Oh, of the dam, the proposed dam or the watershed map?
See, the page that we have has a title on it, but I can't make out what it says because the letters are superimposed over each other. But I can make out that it says something Pacheco Project.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, it says overview. I'm sorry, yeah. I think we forgot to check when we put it in a PDF, thinking that would be helpful because it wouldn't be as big of a file. But yeah, it just says overview.
Okay. So on that map page, so there's a proposed new dam. Where's the existing one? There it is.
It's way down there. And you probably know, there's, the Division of Dam Safety has said that Pacheco Pass Water District can't hold back any water behind that dam now because of the damage that occurred to it in 2017 and then some other high water years. So unfortunately, it's not, for purposes of flood control, to the extent it could provide any, the water district that operates at Pacheco Pass Water District is not allowed to hold back water.
So I have a question as to why, I know that people are, Santa Clara or Valley Water is interested in doing the expansion and your group is against it. But we've heard that there are many of the people that live around there, private properties that are against it. How many of these private properties, will they be displaced if they want to do the expansion?
Yeah, well, it's probably, I mean, if you've driven on 152, it's that, the little tiny road that goes up to the Pacheco reservoir right now. There's really just one ranch house on there. And then, then there's the Ken Lawler's Ranch up there, which there's a historic ranch house there. So there's not that many people. I mean, in terms of like people that would be displaced, it's really not that many because there's really just a couple of large ranches there that are used for cattle and open space.
Most of it is grazing property?
Yeah.
Because whenever we flood, they always say, oh, everybody that's up there by the dam, all the residents, they make it sound like there's a lot of residents that are just against releasing or no, holding back the water. So they will release some of it that it's, that it'll flood us down below. But they make it sound like there's so many more up there that are going to be displaced just from a flood or whenever there's too much water. But I've never been up there, so I really don't know what it looks like up there.
Yeah, one thing we could try to arrange if you are interested is, you know, a tour. It's a little bit, there's many gates because of the cattle operations up there. And so, but it's something, you know, I could talk to Mr. Lawler about if you guys would like to see for yourselves, you know, what's there at the existing reservoir and what's the area above that that would be flooded? You know, I mean, it's something that I think, you know, would be of interest to you all. And yeah, it's just since there's no public access, it makes it difficult to envision, you know, what's going on.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so Paula just said that she would be interested in taking a tour. So if you.
Yeah, I can look into that. Yeah, he has all the gate codes and whatnot. There's another, there's a gal who runs the other ranch in that area. But they have been cooperating with, which is called Rancho El Toro, which is the first, it's just where the dam, the current dam is located. So they've been slightly more cooperative, I would say, with Valley Water in terms of the potential to, you know, take over more of their land. But yeah, I'd be happy to coordinate with you all on getting a tour of that area and letting you see for yourself, you know, what's at stake.
Is there any other, are there any other questions or comments from the trustees? Okay, so I'll call for public comment at this time.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, use the raise hand icon feature by dialing star nine. Rochelle Burley?
Good, okay. I have a couple of questions, Osha. Thanks for the presentation. First question is, I'm wondering if you can expand on maybe what you mean by recharging the groundwater shed or the groundwater storage shed? My next question is, how would you see yourself working with landowners in San Benito County, in particular, those of us in this district? Because you mentioned that. How would you see a potential positive working relationship in helping us to address our flooding issues, if at all? And then my third question is, are you currently working with the Pacheco Pass Water District to address their repairs on their broken floodgates? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Excellent questions. With respect to recharge, the way that we have been thinking about it is primarily in terms of, you know, how Valley Water, which is the proponent of the new dam, you know, could potentially try to meet its desire to have more water supply in storage so that if they get, if we get a series of dry years and their diversions from, primarily from the delta are not available, you know, how can they meet that need? So, you know, the Valley Water does have a recharge program in the south part of the county. So I think we haven't identified a specific, you know, different project that they should do, but we're kind of generally pointing to that, whether it be recharge or groundwater storage. There may be opportunities as well for Valley Water to coordinate with, you know, banked water elsewhere and do exchanges of water. So that's the kind of thing that we've been pointing to. I think in general, as we've been studying, you know, surface water storage in this reservoir, we're seeing that in a hotter, drier future, reservoirs are less efficient, you know, and there's a lot of evaporation and inefficiencies that occur from this kind of storage. So in general, trying to look to how can we, and also we have overdrafted groundwater in many areas. So, you know, kind of in general pointing to that. It's more of a policy direction, I would say. In terms of landowner collaboration, you know, I'm certainly open to ideas. I think hopefully, you know, I can, my contact information can be made available to you to think about things. I mean, for one thing, we'd be happy to come down and maybe do it in person after the way this PowerPoint worked out. But, you know, come and talk to folks about what the concerns are with flooding and, you know, what might be done upstream to help with that. My viewpoint in terms of, from what I know, I think that, you know, the solution probably doesn't lie up in, you know, the tiny corner of the watershed. It has to do with, you know, getting flood capacity going and maybe in the form of recharge projects potentially. But it, you know, it's building up the infrastructure around the creek, which is, you know, super, I'm familiar somewhat with the Chaco Creek and it's, yeah, super flashy. And, you know, some super dry and then, you know, super wet. So figuring out ways to get the, I guess, what I would think is maybe we could support ways to get the resources to your community that would help promote those, you know, protecting you all from flooding. And then maybe also providing, you know, more regular water supplies or, you know, recharging groundwater so that your well pumpers, you know, are able to get their water year round. On the Pacheco Pass Water District, you know, we haven't really, you know, the landowners and the coalition members up in that area, you know, they don't, they're not served by that reservoir. So, you know, we haven't really been focused on how to help the Chaco Pass Water District repair that dam. I think they're, you know, it's a very small district. They don't really have capacity. They've been ordered to fix it, but because Valley Water has put forth this proposal, that would kind of subsume the dam and actually that dam would end up getting taken out. I think that may have, you know, made it difficult for Pacheco Pass Water District to, you know, move forward on other plans. But probably just the availability of funding to try to fix the dam is probably the biggest issue. So I think, you know, certainly if repairing the existing dam and, you know, having that be more operational, you know, is, would be instead of the new reservoir, I think that's certainly something that, you know, we would be interested in talking about.
Is there any other public comment?
There is none in chambers and none on Zoom.
Okay, well, then thank you very much, Osha, for the presentation. It was certainly informative. Okay.
I'm not sure what's going on on your end, but I can't hear anything.
Oh. Okay, well, I was just going to say there's no other public comments. So I was just thanking you for coming and for your informative presentation.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I saw, I thought I saw a mouse were moving, but I couldn't hear anything. So I appreciate the opportunity and please feel free to get in touch. I will check into the idea of a site visit. It would probably need to be like less than a forum, I would think, just because it would be hard to make that be a public meeting due to the access issues. But we could work through that.
Good point. So maybe we can send a representative. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we will move on to 5.2, which is our monthly update regarding debris removal and levee repair.
All right, good evening, trustees. Steve Litt, Public Works Administrator. We're going to go through item 5.2, the update to debris removal and levee repair. So debris removal, quick recap. Two to three sites have been completed. The debris has been cleaned up at two of those three sites with the help of property owners. And the third site, I did talk to Cal Fire. They are scheduled for a site visit this week. They are still trying, they have two curtain burners to possibly burn the pile at the third site. And so they're going to visit because in discussions with Cal Fire, they're not sure that pile is even big enough for a curtain burner to be needed. So after our previous meeting, I sent them an exhibit of the site and the debris pile, which is basically just a large pile of branches and things. And long story short, they're supposed to visit the site either last week or this week. But I talked to them earlier today and they said they'd visit it this week to determine, one, is a pile even large enough for a curtain burner? Because a curtain burner, I guess, is a very efficient, it's essentially a large metal container that you can put a lot of debris in and burn up really quick. So if they determine it's needed, they will try to loan the district the curtain burner. We have not talked about any funding arrangements either way. And they have not asked for any funding. Two, per the photos I sent them, they think there's a possibility they can just go onto site, maybe clear a little bit more of the old walnut orchards that's surrounding the pile. So there's more of a buffer. And then we could just burn the pile in its current condition. So they're supposed to, they have not visited the site as of today, but they're supposed to be there this week to let us know which strategy to move forward on for the debris removal. Levee repair. I completed one of the two steps that the water board asked for, which was just to show the planting plan on the plans. But they also want, I think I mentioned it last time, a mitigation monitoring plan to monitor the levees repair after it's completed, basically to monitor how the hydro seed is growing or not growing. And so I was hoping to get that finished today. I did not, so my apologies. I had set aside a lot of time and I ended up with no time today. So I need to get that in ASAP. It's a, it is a priority for me. So I just, I need to get the permit into the water board so we can finish that. And that's the status of the two items. So I'll pause for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any questions or comments from the trustees? Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have one. Rochelle Beerly? Yes, so my question is, is I, I think last time we talked about this, the holdup with the California Water Board, we were talking about the need of a hydro study. And I wanted to see if we could talk to Steve about, to see if that hydro study that Ryan McAllister from Valley Water District forwarded me, if that was enough and if that will suffice. And I also wanted to talk about, since we're on levee repair and such, we also talked last meeting about future projects with the levee repair further down and also maintenance to maintain what we've done and if the county's, you know, going to help us with that and where we stand. So those are my two concerns.
Okay, well, the second question is actually, we're going to be talking about that a little bit later in the agenda. As to the first question, so I think that Rochelle is referring to, when we were thinking about doing the riprap, they were going to require a hydrologic study. And we decided not to do that so that we could expedite the repairs. But go ahead, Steve, please.
Yeah, thanks for the context. That's correct. The good news with the hydraulic study that I did review from Valley Water is they did model the entire watershed around our Pacheco Stormwater District segment, like I believe it's called Reach Four, when I read through the study. And so the good news is we could utilize that data if the district gave us the model. And in the model, we, our an engineer, would have to just throw in a small segment of riprap where we're going to put in the riprap into their model and have the model analyze if there would be any effects. So we would still unfortunately have to hire a hydrologist to do that or to somehow ask Valley Water to do that, which I have not done. But it would still be an extra step of analysis. The good news is, just for context, because there's been some grants we've talked about and some other activities, as you mentioned, and as Rochelle just mentioned, that are other activities we might want to do. And so the fact that Valley Water has that model could help us perhaps with future grants as well. I don't know, but the good news is they did model the whole basin. We just would have to do a focus study of the riprap area, which I agree, it's, it seems like it should not be necessary, but we just have to hire a hydrologist, throw in the riprap to their model. And I'm, I would be hopeful the model would say, well, it's not going to affect the flows in the creek. But, so that's the status of the question.
Okay, so if we, in the future, if we, because we decided not to move forward with the riprap in that one section. wrap in that one section for now, but you're saying that if in the future we decide to do that, that, that this model, so this would be something that we would get from Valley Water, right? Modeling, I don't know if you could call it software or just put in, yeah.
I'm sorry.
And so we would put in this, this different variable, which is the rip wrap and see what it comes up with.
Correct. That's correct. And, um, again, you know, without diving into the model, I don't know how precise it was, but again, they looked at the topography, it looks like they looked at, sort of from maybe an aerial topography, a 3D map and put that into a model and modeled where all the water was flowing. So the answer is yes. I think assuming Valley Water would, um, loan us the model, so to speak, then we could hire a hydrologist and model any improvements, rip wrap or otherwise into the creek. So that is correct.
That is good news. So should we ask Valley Water for that now or I guess we don't really have a specific use for it at the moment?
Yeah. I would recommend at this point, we just complete the levy repairs, um, that are incomplete of the levy itself. And, um, in the future, now later, ask for permission to use their model and we'd have to have a project, like you're saying, right? I guess step one is can we borrow your model? The good news is even with, with hydrologists, a lot of times, especially with Valley Water, because it's a semi-public agency, I don't know for sure if they have to provide their model, but hydrologists often will share their, their models with a disclaimer that, you know, use at your own risk or whatnot. But, um, other projects I worked on, we were handed a model and then we had to admit, you know, utilize it, I'll say, so.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear that that's, that hydrologists like to share.
They do.
That's good.
They do.
Is there any other public comment on 5.2?
I just wanted, I just wanted to, um, you know, we're at the end of August. We've, I've heard we're going to have a wet winter. Don't know how reliable those predictions are, but since we're on the topic, I liked your suggestion, which was to contact and move forward and let's get our eggs in the basket rather than wait in like in October, November and have to start this again. So that's my input.
Okay. So, okay. I'll reach out to Valley Water, um, this week and ask if we can use, utilize their model, step one. And if they say yes, then the district will have to hire, well, the district would have to decide to hire a hydrologist to utilize the model, but I'll, step one, I think it's great to either way ask for the model and, um, I'll do that.
Thank you. Okay. I think we can move on then to 5.3, and that is an update on the status of the FEMA applications.
Okay. So, um, a little bit of progress with, well, with the levy repairs. The debris removal is still in the environmental review stage and, um, hasn't made much progress there. I think if I can perhaps enter in more data, I was looking at the, um, the debris removal project today, um, maybe it can move forward through the environmental folks. They haven't asked any official questions, but I think I can add more information to hopefully move that forward, unstick that process. I did enter in all their burn permits and burn piles and those type of things and, but it's still in the environmental review stage for the debris removal. And then, so I'll do that. I'll enter more data, uh, to see if that helps, because you can keep uploading documents, basically just for everybody's information. And then in the levy repair, the, it actually has made another step towards getting possibly funded, um, or reimbursement of funds to occur. And so it's now going in through the emergency management mission, integrated environment ME system. It's basically a software system that FEMA uses where once it's passed through all of the staff at FEMA, they put it into the system and then they decide if they're going to obligate a reimbursement. So it's on a close step towards the end of the process where they're going to decide if they're going to obligate funds. It's what's pretty much the last step. So it actually, and that happened on August 20th. So just about a week ago, it went into that step where it's in the final, will we obligate funds to you stage? So that was a little bit of good news there for the levy repairs. So.
Good news. Good to hear that we've progressed to the, the next acronym.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. All right. So is there any comment or questions from the trustees? Any public comment? Okay. Then we will move on to 5.4, which is a discussion of Paterno v. State of California. Is Sean, I don't, is Sean, uh, on the call?
I am.
Ah, great. Good evening, Sean.
Good evening. Hello.
So, um, there was a request at the last meeting, a suggestion that we discuss this case. And, um, I read it and Sean has read it, um, just a, a short synopsis of it. So basically this case goes all the way back to the mid 1980s when there was extensive flooding in the Central Valley. And in particular, this one levy called the Linda Levy, I believe, um, failed and created quite a bit of damage, extensive damage. I don't know how, how much, but a lot. And so property owners filed suit against a number of different government agencies. They, they sued the county, Yuba County, which is where it was located. They sued a local reclamation district, which as far as I could tell, um, had a similar function to our district because it seemed like this reclamation district had the responsibility of regular maintenance of the levy. And then they also sued the state of California. And the case went on for a long time. I think like well over 10 years, I believe. And ultimately this, the county of Yuba ended up settling. The reclamation district, I don't, I'm not sure if there was any liability there ultimately. But the key was that the court ultimately found the state of California liable. And apparently the main reason that, that they found liability was because the state had a flood control project, the Sacramento River flood control project. And as part of that, they incorporated this system of levees. The Linda Levy that failed was incorporated into the state's, um, Sacramento River flood control project. And because of that, the court found that since the state accepted the levy, um, that they, even though they didn't build the levy originally, that they did have liability when it failed. So, um, Sean, do you have anything to add or is that a, an adequate summary?
No, I think that was a great synopsis, yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's what the Paterno case was about. And we are still sort of analyzing how this is relevant to our district. So we're, we need to do a little bit more research, um, but that's the update that we have at this time. Do you have anything else to add, Sean?
Uh, no, but yeah, we need to look at the, sort of the ownership around the levees. Like you said, the state had accepted sort of the levy system in that case. And so the question is whether something similar happened here. So we'll do that research and figure out, um, whether that's the case or not.
Yes. Okay. So are there any comments or questions from the trustees?
Yes, I have a comment. My question is this, when, uh, this levy is a main man, right? So the state is responsible because it's not natural. We, they, they make the levy. So who's responsible for the maintenance and fixing?
Yeah. Well, I, that, that is the question. So the question is that, um, because the, the levy is man-made, does the state have responsibility for it? Is that the question?
Yeah, I think so is what it is. Because I remember, uh, they have a problem in, uh, by taking, what is it, Tulare? I think they have a big flood, flood year. And I hear something about it. The government is going to pay the damage, the, the levy, when they broken, the government is going to pay some money to the people. I don't know if it's true, but I hear something about it. My family, they live over there.
Sean, can you comment?
Uh, what was, what was the question there?
Yeah, the, the question was, and, and I think it really is, is basically what we said we were going to research, but the, the question or the comment was, since the levees are man-made, does the state have responsibility?
Uh, not necessarily. It depends on who owns them at the current time. So that can transfer and it can be, you know, we have to dig into that history to figure out whether that's the case. But no, simply just, simply because it's man-made doesn't mean that the state takes ownership of it. That's, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other comment or questions from the trustees? Is there any public comment?
Yes. Rochelle Beerly? I would suggest that we, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers is all over that, has their stamp, I guess, all over the levy area with several repairs and designs. But when we as a district or property owners are told that we're responsible for it, but yet we can't go in there and even finish our job now because we're being stopped by agency after agency, how can the blame be put on the individual owners when we're trying to be proactive and we're stopped by Fish and Game and we're stopped by California Water Board or, or, or? So I think that really needs to be clear to us. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then we will move on to 5.5, which is update regarding grant and other funding opportunities.
All right. So during the last meeting, we discussed, um, a funding opportunity called the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. And, um, one of the trustees actually reached out to the NRCS, State Conservation Engineer, and asked about the program. The response from that person, um, was that he did not think that the Pacheco Creek qualified for that. I said grant, but it's, I guess it's basically just a program. So that may or may not be true. So I left a message with James Booth, um, who's our local USDA representative and requested that he at least goes on a slash tour site visit to look at a couple areas where there's, you know, in my opinion, some extensive erosivity of the creek banks. We've talked about one of the locations at the southwest corner of Lover's Lane. And there's actually a couple locations upstream. I'm sure there's multiple, I don't know, but I know of at least a couple's locations where there's the creek bank, creek bank is eroding. So, um, I haven't coordinated the site visit with James, I just left him a voicemail, but we'll, I'll try to do that, you know, ASAP. At least get his eyes on those areas and maybe he has some ideas and maybe, you know, we still, the district could still qualify for a program such as this, if not this program. But, um, the response from the state engineer was, well, you, you know, there wasn't a recent event that caused erosion that was reported. But when I read the grant, well, when I read through the program, I think there's still an opportunity where if a staff member from the state NRCS conservation team could still, quote, declare an emergency. I don't know. Bottom line is, I think if, I just want to, um, ask Mr. Booth to come to look at a couple situations out on the creek and at least get his eyes on the situation. So that's where that program stands, just definitely.
That's great. Thank you, Steve. Related to that, we got an, uh, Steve forwarded an email to me last week about something that's happening that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is putting on a levy owners workshop on September 26th, um, up in Sausalito. However, however, it, even though it's an in-person workshop, it does say virtual participation is available. And it says, the email that accompanied this announcement says, um, "At the workshop, you will learn tips on preparing for flood season, how to request levy repair and recovery assistance from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and others, how the Corps conducts levy inspections and risk assessments, and Corps of Engineers technical assistance available for flood risk management planning. And of course, there will be time to connect with fellow levy owners and U.S. Army Corps of Engineer staff." So I think that this would be good for somebody to go to. It is an all-day thing, nine to four, and it's on a Thursday, September 26th. So it's difficult for me, I'd have to take a day off. But, and, and the reason I'm talking about this now is because I think this really is related to potential funding opportunities. I think this is networking that could be very helpful. So, um, are either of the trustees or, um, our advisory board member, is anybody interested in possibly signing up for this? Okay. So people are going to look at their schedules. So I will, we can talk after the meeting too, but, um, but I think this could be, could be useful. So, all right. Are there any comments or questions about grant opportunities, about this agenda item? From the, from the trustees? Nothing? Okay. A public comment?
None at this time.
Okay. Great. All right. Then we will move on. So the next item is an update on our request to modify our loan from the county. So as a recap, in order to complete the repairs that, that have been done to the levy, last year, we were able to obtain a loan from the county and the Board of Supervisors loaned us $1.6 million with the understanding that we had filed applications for disaster relief from FEMA and that we would use the FEMA money to pay them back. So as Steve has presented at previous meetings, it appears that we are going to come, um, come in under budget, at least under 1.6 million with the, uh, with the repairs related to the FEMA applications and that there might be some of that $1.6 million left over. and that there might be some of that $1.6 million left over. So last week, I had a meeting with two of the supervisors, Supervisor Gonzalez and Supervisor Zanger, to discuss the possibility of modifying the agreement to see if we could, if they would basically let us use that surplus for other needed repairs, urgent repairs that are not covered by the FEMA reimbursement. And during the course of that meeting, we were looking at the loan agreement and we realized that there didn't seem to be anything specific in there that said that we had to use the loan proceeds specifically for the FEMA-related projects. So we decided to put the question to our counsel, Sean Cameron, and he replied, and Sean, do you, to me today, but Sean, do you want to summarize what your opinion is on this question?
Sure, yeah, as I discussed with you via email, the loan agreement and the associated resolution that the board passed are broad enough to include other work that, like you said, wouldn't necessarily stem from the FEMA-related work specifically. That said, the agreement does speak to identified funding. So if it wasn't FEMA, then I think we should identify the funding prior to allocating it. So that, yeah, that's my opinion on that.
Thank you, Sean. I have a follow-up question on that. So in terms of identifying other sources of funding, so in other words, that the idea would be another source that we could use to then pay the county back. Does the resolution or the agreement, does it specify how far along? I mean, we have to identify other sources of funding, but do we have to have filed an application? Or does funding have to be obligated? Does it say anything to that effect?
It does not, but I would make it, I would, I would look at it the same way as sort of the original funding, which was the FEMA funding. So to have it at least to that stage where there's a reasonable, you know, sort of basis for believing that the funding is going to come in before you took that next step.
Okay, so at least to have filed an application that has a reasonable chance?
At least to have filed, and I would think to have some success in that regard too. Not simply a filing, but a response that said, yes, we think this is eligible, you know, that sort of thing.
Okay, so we don't have anything like that right now. So I guess our options at this point, if we wanted to use that surplus money, the money that will be left over of the $1.6 million, we have two choices. Either we secure another potential source of funding that we can then say, well, we have this other funding that's in the works, sort of similar to the FEMA application, or we then still have to go back to the board and specifically ask for modification of terms or for just separate money, I guess. So that's the way I, that's how it stands, at least as far as I can tell. Are there any comments or questions from the trustees? Okay, any public comment on this issue? Go ahead.
I'm wondering, does a county have a flood plan or a flood management plan or a prevention plan where they've allocated funds, put funds aside to help, you know, in a continuous effort to improve flood-troubled areas, districts, locations? Because I think that would be a good thing for us to pursue if that's the case. So.
Okay, Steve, do you have any input on this question?
A little bit, yes. So we have started discussions about trying to get funding in place for this exact type of activity, but we really haven't made much progress in that regard. Primarily, but, so I think it's a worthwhile effort, so we'll continue to have that discussion. Primarily because we don't own or operate any of the flows except near the bridges. So we do think that we still need some funding, a slush fund, a rainy day fund, some funding for these type of activities and instead of just being reactive to actually have something to be proactive with. But we actually used some fundings, I think it was in 2017, we had some money available, we used that plus a little bit more to actually do a levy repair actually near the site. And that depleted, there was a small amount of funds available. So long story short, we're going to continue to try to accumulate funds, but I don't know of any fund for flood management program currently.
All right, thank you, Steve. Is there any further public comment?
None at this time.
All right, then we will move on to 5.7, Discuss and Approve the Community Cleanup by Cheer.
Okay, so Cheer is a volunteer nonprofit creek cleanup group. I did send an email to them, I believe it was about three weeks ago, actually asking them if we could possibly get on their schedule for a September cleanup. I didn't hear back from them, so I sent a follow-up email based on our last discussion September, or three weeks ago, on August 5th, to ask if we could at least schedule a site scouting visit to walk along the creek. Because we all discussed how really the first step is to go scout and make sure there is trash in the creek that needs to be removed. I've seen some, not a lot. Most of it was branches and things that had kind of accumulated and they just take out trash. They don't take out vegetation and those type of things. Just so we're all on the same page, which I think I mentioned last time. But, so yeah, I haven't heard back on the scouting site walk. I'll try to send another email. They pretty much communicate by email, not by phone, which is interesting. But I haven't heard back. I've sent two emails, but I have not heard back at this time. So that's where it stands.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
You bet.
Is there any comments or questions by the trustees? Waiting, yes.
Actually, I do have one question. So if Cheer only does the garbage, what, who would do the vegetation? Is it just CCC? Well, back then, I know it was called CCC, but I don't.
So, yeah, you're right. California Conservation Corps, who is, they're fairly affordable. I think for a crew of five, you could reserve them for the whole week for under $15,000. And they, that's definitely something they do. They're willing to do it. We've worked on, with them on a couple other projects. And the other good news is if we use them to clean debris that's loose, the agencies don't typically have a lot of issues if you're taking out loose debris that's not connected to, that's not, doesn't have roots and those type of things. So, so yeah, if the district, if the trustees decided to spend some of the, I think it was 40 or 50K available, we could reach out to California Conservation Corps. They're not free, but they're very, very reasonable.
If we were to reach out to them, how soon would they be able to come out?
On a previous event, they were out within about three weeks. So they were pretty responsive. It's just, they have teams kind of sprinkled around the state. And if they have a team available, they just reach out and grab that team and you sign up some forms. And so to answer your question, the last time I worked with them, it was about two or three weeks till they sent a team out.
Honestly, that sounds like it might be more worthwhile. I mean, I know Cheer is free, but they could do more, right? Do you, do you have a sense, for that $15,000, you said it was 15? How big of an area do you think that they could work on? You know, it's for a week?
Correct. I don't know. They're efficient. And this is one of the activities that they do. They clear areas. I think, I haven't been into the stream lately. I think that obviously we'd want to do when the stream is dryish for them to be productive in the stream. So that's the only thing that might be a constraint, I guess you'd say. So. But I can reach out to them and ask for, you know, just their availability. And I'll make another site. I haven't been to Lover's Lane for a couple of weeks, so I can go back out there and see what kind of flows we're experiencing. You all probably know better than I do how dry or not dry it is out there. But obviously, they need a little bit of access to just get into those areas. But it's a good idea. I think it's a very good idea.
Yeah, I agree. There is still water. I mean, there's been water the whole summer. And I think they might have released some water recently because we heard it flowing a little bit. So they might have even done a release from the dam, but it's not a lot. I mean, there's still plenty of area that's dry.
Well, maybe we can contact somebody up at Pacheco and make sure that they hold back so that we can get a dry spell and be able to get in the creek.
Yeah, but I think because we've had two pretty rainy years, I think there's just a lot of water in general. So it just, you know, but anyway.
So how about this? As an action, I'll reach out to them. I'll ask them if we can potentially reserve them for a week and get a quote. And then a month from now, I mean, in September, I can at least present that info for a decision by the trustees to see. That might work out with timing and creeks. And then the trustees can decide if they want to utilize whatever that amount of money. And obviously, I'll get a scope from the California Conservation Corps and say, okay, for a week with your crew, approximately how much can you clear out? And then you three can make a decision. Would you like to do that?
Yes, I think so.
We would make a decision also as to, from where to where?
Yes, so the answer is yes. And there's, the answer is yes. So I'll come up with an exhibit. I know there's one spot between San Felipe and Lover's Lane on the creek that still needs to be cleaned or there's some debris, vegetative debris. However, most of it is actually downstream now of the Lover's Lane Bridge because this group did a real good job of cleaning out the segment, you know, from Lover's Lane to San Felipe. But downstream, I'm sure there's plenty of possibilities, I'll say.
Yeah, behind our house, for sure. Okay.
I think from Rochelle's house to your house, I think that would be a good.
Well, yeah, that's the, and that's going to, that's the section that would impact flooding on Lover's Lane.
But I'm not sure how much there is upstream from Rochelle's house.
Well, upstream, we don't go too much further. The district doesn't.
We don't. And just for full disclosure, from San Felipe to Lover's Lane, 75% of that is very clean because of the previous effort. So there is one spot, but, so we'll designate that spot. But then I think we'll just focus on, besides that one spot downstream of the Lover's Lane Bridge, I think it's mostly over some of the different, so you're right, upstream is not our jurisdiction, so.
Yeah, that we'll have to, we'll have to figure that out some other way later. Okay, is there any public comment on this?
Yes. Rochelle Beerly.
I was just wondering if we could, my question on Cheer, is that just for our section? Or is that perhaps for the whole Pacheco Creek? Because I would suggest if it's for our area, I mean, I think we might want to talk about, or you guys might want to talk about scrapping the idea instead of it always returning on the agenda. Also, on the CCC issue, do they clear out, like, the big debris? Or is this just more like the organic debris clear out? And could we look into maybe talking to them, the CCC, on a maintenance program? So those are my ideas.
Steve?
So regarding California Conservation Corps, they, they're flexible, I'll say. They've helped on, they will definitely help clear debris and loose debris. They will definitely do that within the creek if we ask them to assist in that regard. They, but they can't, if the question is, can they take a, you know, bulldozer, backhoe down the creek? That would require the permits and things, if anything has roots in the creek. So if that answers your question. But long-term, just even for loose debris, I think it's a real good idea if there's a, you know, funding source, funding mechanism, even if there's some, you know, how much of the 40, 50,000 would like to be utilized by the trustees. The Conservation Corps, they're very responsive and very helpful, and that's the kind of thing they do.
Well, I mean, it just, well, except for the portions where we did the debris removal, right? That's funded by FEMA or hopefully funded by FEMA. I mean, the rest of the creek, it hasn't been done in decades. So, you know, it's, it'll have to be better. I mean, I think it would be a good use of $15,000. And, and if it works out well, I mean, if we got the permits, would they, would they have the capacity to actually take out things that have roots? If we had the permits? I mean, we're not going to in the next month, but I mean, looking down the line.
I've seen them with small equipment. I have not seen them hog out a creek. So I'm not sure about the answers to that. I've seen them with small tractors and small equipment. So the answer is maybe.
Well, we have to see how, you know, this works, right?
Yeah, sounds good.
That's great. Is there any other public comment?
Marcel Beerly.
Yeah, to 5.7. For me, the questions are, the cleanout is one thing. What's going to happen with the debris? I don't, you know, are they burning it? Are they wood chipping it? What are they doing with the debris? So that has to be solved before we do that again. So that they have the wood chipper, it needs to be taken care of. Yes, we do have a 26-mile stretch, but if we're talking San Felipe Road on downwards, that's very manageable. And if we're talking five people, then that's probably a lot of hand labor in the creek trying to get the loose debris and take it out or chip it or whatever. So, and I guess the last question was already answered, three trunks? No, they probably can't do that with a small tractor, yes. So just what's happening to the debris, just taking it out is not finishing of the project. Thanks.
Thank you. So Steve, can you speak to that?
Yeah, they, they will take the debris out of the creek and place it on properties. I've never, I don't know the answer about if they have a chipper or if they would help with burn piles and things. So I haven't utilized them for that. So I don't know the answer. I do know they'll get the loose dead debris out of the creek on the creek banks, I guess you'd say, on private property. But it is a good question because the next step is what do we do with it? And, you know, we have to get permission from property owners to place the debris out there. So if you say, okay, this is our segment, and they say, okay, fine, we can take the debris and put it outside of the levies, then we'd have to coordinate that with those property owners. A, would they burn it? Property owners? B, California Conservation Corps folks? Or C, you know, would the property owner just allow it to be there? So, so we'll ask those questions. It's good questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
None at this time.
All right, so we'll move on to 5.8, update on outreach, social media. I don't have any updates. I think last time we said that we might try to use that Nextdoor page to get volunteers, but that's obviously on hold because we haven't heard from Cheer. So do the trustees have any comments on that agenda item? Is there any public comment? No?
None at this time.
Okay, so then the last item is future agenda items. So we always, always talk about the status of the levee repair and we always talk about the FEMA applications. Are there other agenda items that anyone has any suggestions about? Okay, we'll take public comment then. What is the?
Rochelle Beerly.
I just wanted to address Paula directly. When we went on that field trip a couple of months ago, we were discussing about your concern perhaps with that debris pile stacking that was going on on Lover's Lane and perhaps it being a problem. Is that still a concern of yours?
So to my understanding, on Lover's Lane, there is property that was sold. And this property, the owner went in, they put mixed media to raise the ground. So when you drive by it, you just feel like this property is higher. To my understanding, back in the olden days when I moved in there, you were not to be raising the ground level. I think there was actually a posting before, but it's been taken down since. But that there was some sort of code that you could not bring any materials, be it dirt or mixed media of some sort, to raise the ground level. So this property owner, he's a new owner, purchased this property, put all kinds of mixed media. So now it's a big pad all along Lover's Lane. So you feel like it's raised. So now he has a bunch of containers. We don't know what's in the containers, but these containers are all just sitting there as a storage area. I do know who the property owner is, but I'm not sure what the plan is. But my concern is it, being that it's raised and it's right in front of homes that used to get all the water, all the whole flooding into their homes. But now that this pad is higher, now if it floods, the water's going to go around that pad and it's going to hit everybody else around it more than those that were in the direct path of the water. That is a concern to me because I'm not sure why that was allowed when we know that there are a lot of other properties, when they have truckloads and truckloads of dirt. They have to get permits. It has to go through so many approvals. And yet, here we are in a flood zone and this happened. So I'm not sure. But yeah, that is a concern. That could also happen. It depends on how rapid the water goes through. Because if it becomes like flash flood, it will wash all that into the property owners that are right in front of it.
Okay, so I get how that would impact flooding. I don't know if it's within our purview though because it doesn't really have anything to do with the flow in the creek per se and repairs and maintenance of the creek. So I don't, that might be a bit beyond our scope here. But what I would suggest, I don't, I don't know if we could talk to someone in planning, just, you know.
Code enforcement.
Yeah, about that. So I don't know. I mean, we could certainly, I mean, if there's a real concern, I would say first go to planning and see what's going on and what happened. And was there a permit issued and so forth? And then if there's a real concern, then I guess you go to the Board of Supervisors meeting. But I don't, but I don't think it's something that we can officially deal with as a district because it doesn't, it's not really pertaining to the creek per se. Well, yeah, I would think, yeah.
They're on Lover's Lane.
And it's in that part of Lover's Lane. I don't know if that property borders the creek, does it?
No, it does not.
Okay.
The property does, but the property that was purchased does not border the creek. So I think they subdivided that property.
I see. Okay, so we don't even have any easements on that property, more than likely, so.
I have a comment about that situation. With that owner, he buy the property. I take a bunch of pictures and I send them to the county. And Steve, he show up one time. When, you remember Steve, when they have problems in two houses in front of the, all the debris? All the stuff they dump in there, they have river, black, concrete. It's a bunch of garbage. It's why I start one day and take a bunch of pictures, you know? And it's going to be a big issue because those three or four houses in front of that pile, like you said, it's going to be push the water to your house, to the other side and all the houses in the front. And I think so that property, they belong, say I'm right, that property belong to the person they have all the debris in front of the forest tops. And I think so they stopped. They stopped the guy because he don't move it material for a long time. And every once in a while, they started moving material again. So that one, I mean, like, I understand when I buy my property, they told me that I supposed to have clean dirt and everything, you know, get the permits, you know, to have everything done. And a lot of people, it's what they do, you know, they try to fix his properties. But the only problem is you fix your property and you damage your neighbors, you know? So it's something that, yes, we have to make a comment in the county. I think so we talked to V Gonzalez. I think so V Gonzalez show up one day and she saw all the debris and everything, so.
Yeah, well, I would then recommend maybe going to a Board of Supervisors meeting if, again, if you haven't talked to anyone at planning or code enforcement. I would go to a Board of Supervisors meeting and maybe speak at the, during the public comment section. I don't know. But I don't, I don't think that we can really address it here. All right, are there any other future agenda items suggested? Any public comment? No? All right, 7:36. That's not bad. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
A motion, we adjourn this meeting of August 26?
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor? I opposed. Meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be September 23rd, I believe. So we'll see you then.